They've already changed it to a torrent, so some of the stuff is a process and we started working during.
Okay.
So I do have one follow-up question and it's general in nature. So the study also suggested that the amount of calls that were being recorded by your departments was inflated somewhat relative to what was actually happened. Can you explain that to me?
All the information that we gave them between calls, calls of service, radio calls, phone calls are all.
They're all documented in the computer.
Because I'm trying to understand, you know, I know that our population has decreased this year.
We're not plugging numbers on our end.
I'll give you this.
No, I'm not, please, Steve, I'm not saying that you are, I'm just saying the study said that you were, so I'm just trying to understand.
The town of East Line is, and I'll use an number up here, Enford number, it's a National Fire Reporting Incident Number.
Right.
000501, that's the town of East Line.
Mm-hmm.
So if Billy Ricks goes on a fire call and Steve Rorgo goes on a fire call, it's the same number, but both firehouses respond to it.
Right.
So they're doing different actions, they might be on a highway, we might have three different wrecks we're on a highway, but it's all one number. So when the firehouses sit down and do their run throughs for the firehouse, it's one number, but you have three calls within that number.
Right.
So when you start to tally those numbers up, they don't show you the true statistics of what happened. That's like when we talk about dispatch. When you get one call, you might have 10 calls that make up that long call.
Mm-hmm.
They don't show that, so they might say you only had 200 calls, but underneath that 200 calls, you had 500 calls.
Hmm.
Because they're not breaking it down how we break it down. You have to report this one number, but there's so many other calls within that number, we have to report that for ourselves if somebody gets hurt. There's new ocean laws coming out now that any time you have a fire starting July 1st, you have to instant report every single person, because there's a new cancer vote that's coming out. So if you go to a fire and there's 25 people there, we're going to need to pull out an incident report for 25 people.
Mm-hmm.
Each one of those reports is probably going to take four or five minutes, a whole questionnaire, you know, what contaminants were there, what did they walk into, did they have an ear? Did they, where they're, it's a whole process. So the numbers you might see from that study, there's a lot of missing numbers that didn't get tallied into.
Okay. So high level, high level, would you say that the activity in our town is decreasing, staying the same, or increasing?
Increasing.
From fire ambulance, fire marshal inspection wise, I mean with the three new schools going, we're going to have to make sure the firehouses are up to date on all their, you know, rescue, making sure they're prepared, knowing when the schools are being, I'll just use that as an example, you know, they could be working down the second story of the United Center School, we've got to make sure that, one, to provide inspection for, two, we have adequate, you know, adequate fire department personnel on the scene in case something happens, so like Jason can tell you during the construction, it's not going to take two people to go in. Both firehouses are still, well, the schools are in construction. So with the increase of AHEPA's private rehabs, there, you know, there's a lot of activity between Crescent Point and Private Park, Private Park, I'm sorry rehab. You could go down to lunch and sit at, on Main Street, walk, you're going to see the ambulance go by. Our ambulance service, our fire service are moving. I mean, I know that there are people saying the ambulance, the ambulance, but it's the fires too, it's, you know, Flanders Firehouse and Nineteenth Firehouse doing the fire prevention with our office, having the young kids go through the firehouses, checking the firetrucks every day, doing the stuff that you don't never see in the study, that they do all day. And that's the hard part. And I know, we talk about hours, you know, our I start at 6:00 AM. A lot of calls come in at literally 5:30, 5:45. A lot of volunteers have to be working at 6 o'clock. You have that gap between 5:00 and 6:00, where it's hard, you know, hey, do I go to an ambulance call, or am I going to be late for work?
I go to work.
So you've got to understand, as a volunteer, sometimes you can't be late 10 times and say, hey, I was on an ambulance call, because now your employer might not like that. So you have that gap that we really have to figure out how to fill.
Mm-hmm.
And other talks in how to fill it, but those are things that we in the firehouses, every day, you're concerned. You know, you're out to dinner with your family and a call comes in, there might not, there's only one part-time guy in either end of town. You know, it could be up on Holmes Road, so by the time the guy at Nineteenth Firehouse goes all the way to Holmes Road, that's a 20-minute ride. If someone's having a heart attack, a stroke, you might get to the hospital. Just use that as one example. So there's a lot of things that that study doesn't show. And I think that if we, maybe sit down as a group, get some convenience and say, hey, what can we work on?
That was one of the recommendations.
Okay, yeah. But I'm just saying, we need to do that. We've started talking about stuff, but it's hard for us to not keep saying, well, the fire study, the fire study. I think we have.
Well, it's all we have to work with.
I understand that, but that's something that we are now picking the pieces up and trying to work for, just like you are.
We also need to understand whether that expenditure of funds was wise.
I think it's a baseline. You have to have something to start with. I mean, you can't, if you're right or wrong, we're going to find out loopholes that are in our town. I think it was a prudent choice to do it, but I think now that's basically, any job when you start, you have to have something I document to work on. I think that's what we did. So now we have somewhere to go from here.
Okay.
I'll just get ideas.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes, I'll send that one.
Yes, John.
Chief Ricks?
Yep.
I agree with, I know where Elise is coming from as far as that overtime, but that's for East Line, the contract, 40 straight time and five overtime.
Yeah, just East Line.
Now, other departments in other towns, is that standard for contracts or not?
I can't speak on other units.
You don't know?
I don't know it, so I don't know.
Okay.
When it was introduced decades ago, it's exactly what was just talked about, volunteer, when your full-time firefighters are done for the day, or they haven't come in yet, you're at the mercy of volunteers answering the call at 5:30, at 6:00, at 6:30 in the morning, when we haven't spread this out. So this was a way, when this was done, again, a lot before me, a lot before any first selectman you've ever met, this was done in order to spread our coverage out and get an extra hour out of everybody, out of seven guys a day, so we would have actual people sitting in the firehouse waiting for a call. That's why they're working nine hours, nine eight hours a day. We can start a day at nine and go all the way to six at night, instead of a smaller window. It opens up our opportunity for someone riding an ambulance like that, or a firetruck. That's why it's done. We'll go over that at some point, I'll let you know how we make up on that.
What my concern was, if other towns have the same contract, 40 plus five, and then we change ours to 40, how hard is it going to be to get good personnel in town?
We're already starting to lack. We just had a guy leave from Flanders a couple months ago. We replaced him. Steve's losing a guy on Friday, he's been here for 30 years, and we have a list of part-timers that we're going to hire for the full-time spots, and we're almost, used it already. And we don't have anybody else coming behind, so eventually, when we start hiring again, we're going to have to go outside the town. Luckily, we've been able to hire local guys, been part-time and volunteer in town, and like you said, we start changing what the pay is going to be, we don't know what we're going to get.
So why did he leave, if you can say?
They retired, they aged out.
Okay. So full-time leaves, part-time when you move one of them up?
Yeah, if they applied and tested, then they, we hire from within.
Okay, thanks.
So that's why I think the overtime has to be coupled with the wage studies, so that we can holistically look at neighboring towns and things like that, and not try to just cherry pick one item and say, oh, that's a bad one, when it's actually part of everything else.
Yep.
Okay.
Quick question, so I'm just trying to understand the overtime also. I'm looking at the two different budgets. In both the overtime line is about, one 67,000, the other one is 62,000. One has four employees, one has three employees, so.
I give you the breakdown of mine, I can't speak on behalf of Chief Rorgo.
Yeah, I just guess I'm trying to compare two fire departments when you have the same nine-hour, or whatever the work rate is, why one is.
So for three guys, with their five hours a week, that's around 34,000 and change, they get 108 hours overtime throughout the, holiday hours throughout the year, so that's overtime. That's another 14 and change. I budget, and I've always budgeted, for 100 hours of unseen. That's storms, they get a call before their, someone goes home at 5:00 and the call came in at 4:30, they don't go back until 6:00, 7:00 o'clock. That's unforeseen hours. I mean, just last three storms, I've had all three guys overnight, I mean, we're burning through some of the overtime of that, but nothing we can do about that. You know, the storm, we had the 911 center, radios went down, so the volunteers wouldn't know that we were going to have a call, so I had to bring the full-timers in to cover the firehouse, because nobody was going to get the page that there was a fire or EMS call.
I'm just, because I don't know how it all works, I just look at.
I also have two firefighters, I need EMT refresher, so that's another 40 hours each.
Okay, and again, I'm just looking at the numbers, you know, and I understand that there's a lot of behind-the-scenes things that go into it, and I know it's just not overtime, just that overtime, I'm just trying to.
No, I know, and you guys hammered me about this last year, so I had went back to the previous budgets.
You felt hammered tonight, Bill.
I didn't.
And, you know, 2016, we had 49,000 overtime, but we had one full-timer out for over 13 weeks. 2015, we had 45,000, we had two full-timers out, a total of 20 weeks. 2014, the same thing, we had two full-timers out, almost 20 weeks. 2013, we had two full-timers out, about 13 weeks, and that's 64,000, 55,000, 2012 and 2013. And then, so those three years where we're all around the 40s, it's because we didn't have them there to make the overtime, so that's why those numbers are all low to the previous budgets when we were looking for the overtime. So like last year, when I asked for 60, we're like, well, the previous only shows less. And you've got to remember, these guys are getting raises every year too, so these, the 45 isn't a true number of what they should be getting in the budget.
I know any other questions, I'm just trying to figure it out.
I understand it's hard to come up with a formula that works, so if I, what I do is I look at past years, and I just kind of see that delta from the past years, because the number of people versus the number of hours, and it's not 6 plus 6 equals 12, it's square root of 14 divided by 11 divided by, it's, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
You've had your first introduction to our new fire marshal this evening. Our new fire marshal is the deputy fire marshal for a number of years under Dick Morris. Dick has retired, was in the last 30 days or so. Chris, you stepped into the big shoes and you're more than filling them, and proved tonight, when you came up and gave us some information.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
So, this is, it's always been a big budget, this was difficult last year, because if you remember, we also had our dispatch in our fire marshal's budget last year, and emergency manager. So last year, we tore it apart a little bit, and we got very close to getting it right. There was a few items that we had to do with dispatch, as you remember, a couple meetings ago, we ended up having to put some more money into the dispatch line item. But right now, this is fire marshal's office. Does the emergency management have their own budget?
It's within this budget too.
It's still within this budget?
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
Our emergency management director is now Mike Finkelstein, so his stipends in this budget, which is a $10,000 stipend to be emergency management director, and the clerical that the fire marshal's office and the emergency management director, the clerical that they will share, is in this budget as well, so keep that in mind. Obviously, you're going to see a decrease here, as we lose a big ticket item, being Mr. Morris, and we did not hire to replace Mr. Taylor's position, former position, as deputy. We're going to go with Chris being the director, the fire marshal, and have his part-timers be his support. So from there, you could take it away and produce a few more items on your budget, I'm sure there'll be some questions.
Good evening. As you started, I'm the new fire marshal in town, I took over from Mr. Morris. During that process, Mr. Morris and myself started the budget, surprising he retired about a month ago. So some of the stuff is in here, and has emergency management and ourself in here. So to start with, it's got, for the director's part 211, it's got 87,423. 10,000 of that is for the EMD director, which is the chief Finkelstein. One, as in this year, we just had our female value added drill a few weeks ago, and we were the only town in this area to get a perfect score, there was no recommendations. We succeeded very well. It was a new regime, but we tried some new stuff and it worked out very well. Part-time fire marshals, that's increased by 53 percent.
Wait, just one, we are, 10,000 out of line 211 is for Mr. Finkelstein?
Correct.
Thanks.
Line 213 for part-time fire marshals. With the increase this year of inspections that are going to be happening in the summertime, with the three schools being renovated, the potential gateway project coming up, and not having the deputy fire marshal anymore, we're going to be having a lot more inspections in the next two years, because the schools will really need an inspection in the morning, the afternoon, and in the evening, during the construction phases. So we're going to have to make sure that there's three large buildings being constructed at once, and potentially the gateway project. Those inspections could happen Monday through Sunday, and whatever their work schedule is, if they're running behind, they could potentially be working weekends. So that's why that number has been increased, to cover all those inspections. Currently, the year-to-date, we're at about 200 inspections from January 1st to now. That's inspections with re-inspections. We currently inspect all commercial businesses, where we do liquor license, we do apartment inspections, like today we did the base style apartments on Main Street, I believe there's 26 apartments, so there's two of us running around that building, you know, set an alarm off, run to that apartment, check the fire alarm, come back. Every, each year in the June timeframe, we do lodging permits. I believe there's about 13 of them that encompass the hotels, motels, the Rockinick Motel, there's some smaller cottages that are within town, and they have a $50 permitting fee with that that we inspect.
So quickly, while you're there, this sheet also has a typo, and in the green folder, there's a replacement for the revenue versus net budget, actually comes out to 248, 721, 232. It's a little thing, but for housing keeping, there's a new sheet in the green folder. You were just talking about revenue, and that's why I wanted to bring that whole thing up, because revenue is something that, again, is near and dear to my heart.
Definitely. Longevity went down with Mr. Morris's retirement, so that was about cut in half at, I'm sorry, we're at like 46 percent. So our total increase for all of those is about, is a negative 21 percent, but that's with Mr. Morris's retirement and the part-timers coming up to help. One thing, we always have to make sure there's a fire marshal within town, so if I go on vacation, I have to have someone cover, because if the firehouse is called, we have to have someone there within a reasonable amount of time. So for my vacation time, if I go away, maybe a weekend if I'm going out with my kids, or there's something that goes on, before I go anywhere, I have to find coverage. So that's what's part of there too. Building maintenance, basically saying the same, our building was made, built in 1946, that's going to cover our generators and stuff like that within town, some plumbing issues that may arise. Our radio maintenance, we have had our radio contract now, it has not increased in the last five years. So part of that, we've added new radios, so they've asked for a 5 percent increase for next year. We use them a lot, I think with the service that we get from our radio service, utility communications. If I call, they're there within a short amount of time, and they're very, very well. Our battery maintenance and stuff like that, so if Chief Ricks or Chief Rorgo buy batteries, they get the same price.
Just for clarity, when you say you added new radios, you increased your quantity? You didn't replace old with new?
Well, some of them, we had some that broke that they repaired and sent back, so let's say if I had a radio that broke, they might, they sent us back a radio. Part of our contract, they have to replace it. We've purchased some smaller portables for that, if a large one was, let's say somewhere like $2,200, I replaced some of those with $300 radios. They've honored our contract, so those numbers might fluctuate a little bit. I've also added equipment into our console that increased over the last two years. Currently, with the town of East Line merging with Waterford, so to speak, for their police department and their lockups, we didn't have, their radio system's on an 800 band system, we're on a 150 band system, so we had to add an 800 band radio into our console. So those are the ones we've had to add in overtime to accommodate our surrounding town. So if we do go to Waterford, we can still talk to them, or if their ambulance comes here, they can talk to us. It's for communication-wise, some of the state radios have changed, so those radios have cost a little bit more, and cost a little more to maintain. Telephone has stayed the same, training has stayed the same. We have eight guys that are in our office, myself, full-time, the rest are part-timers. Each one of us has to maintain our hours, we have to do 90 hours of training every three years. So those classes, it's tough, because a lot of times you go to a training, you'll do a two-day class, and they'll give you 12 hours of training, to break out your lunch, your breaks, and it takes a while to get those hours. Cert training, we have a cert, we have a small number of cert people, but we still have to have some money for them in case we have a cert activation. Transportation allowance, it's $500, in case one of our vehicles break down and the part-timers have to use their own car, we have to, you know, a little contingency for that. Uniforms are $1,500, we use that for all our part-timers and myself, for the $1,500. Miscellaneous supplies is $16,818, so there is almost a 12 percent increase. The engineering department was paying for a nutmeg connection, that's a connection with the fire department and the police department and dispatch, they're paying out of their budget, they transferred it back to our budget, so that's what that increase is for, so.
Where did that come from, Chris?
The engineering department, Bill Shear. So that's kind of our budget, if anybody has any questions.
Questions? Yes. Hi, Chris.
Hello.
Is the position of fire marshal and director the same thing?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So let's talk about line 213 a minute.
213, yes.
So part-time fire marshals, which is up 53 percent. So your note says, deputy fire marshal's at 48 hours a week times $20.35 an hour, I assume that's the time and a half rate, is that right?
Uh, well, yes. Well, that'd be, that could be more than two or three fire marshals doing inspections, so that's the 48-hour straight time, no overtime with that.
Times 52 weeks.
Yes.
So you said that you were going to be required to do inspections with the schools, except they're not going to be built next year.
They're going to be starting, construction-wise, June 27.
They're going to start, yeah, but they're not, I mean, are you going to be in a place, really, to do inspections coming up in this fiscal year?
The first day we're there, that, when they start breaking ground, we're there that morning.
Okay, so the increase in this line item is based on the workload you're going to probably foresee at the schools?
Definitely correct, yeah, because we're going to be going now, besides the workload we're going to do now, we're going to be doing four inspections a day, I'm sorry, three inspections a day, three times a day.
Okay.
So, and if we're not there, it slows the process down, it pushes them out.
Okay, that's all I have. Oh, one thing for you, Anna.
Yes.
That net budget number, you know how we have a new sheet for that?
Yes.
This is the third sheet. Isn't that a calc field in Excel? I mean, it's making me ask questions about the other numbers.
No, no, I have to update it because it's always based on what column it comes from, because it changes myself on each column.
Right. All right, so it's not a consistent column that you can put a formula in? Okay, thanks. That's it, thank you.
Doug?
Quick question.
Sure.
Approximately, how many 9/11 calls do you have?
For the total building, or for?
Just for, say, for the week.
Oh, we're doing about.
Is that dispatch?
Is that police?
Yeah.
Yeah, is that police fire?
That comes out to Mike Finkelstein, now he runs dispatch, just so you know, it's out of the fire marshal's office.
I assisted with the equipment there, because of the years of helping them, and we're transitioning that over. I was, I was one of the guys who built dispatch myself, so for me to stop there, it would raise a lot of, I mean, I try to, if a problem comes in, they give me a call, I go there, try to figure out what happened. If I can get rid of a cost, I do fix it myself, before we call anybody else, try to be a cost savings.
So he took over this year, right?
Yes, he did.
And before he took over, how many 9/11 calls were there?
I couldn't give you a true number, but I could say that.
About.
About every day, you're having anywhere from, police, fire, EMS, you could be doing 60, 70 calls a day. You know, you could be doing 12, 13, 14, 15.
Probably more now.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's going up too, because, I mean, you're doing, chief, how many ambulance calls a day do you do?
85.
Yeah, and there's some days, what we actually, we have, we'll have, well, the three ambulances that are in town, Waterford, you have Old Lima and East Line, and it's not, that's not, it's a true number that can happen at any point.
Yep.
You know, we've had a fight at the prison, you had an ambulance call at Crescent Point, you had an ambulance call at AHEPA. I mean, that's four within, that's happened before, so.
Okay.
And that could be a police number too now, because you could be, yeah, I mean, I could get you, we can do statistics for you, I used to do those for Mr. Morris and stuff, and now we have a brand-new computer system within the dispatch center that logs everything, I mean, everything we do, it's being tallied. It's called the Viper system, that's the new 911 computers that the state just put in, so it's, the phones are very busy up there. I mean, during, I'm a, I'm a, I've always, I'm a part-time dispatcher, just to learn the stuff that we build. There's times where Molly, Ms. Perino, was working by herself in the fire, where she called me like, hey, can you come down here real quick, because there's so much going on?
Yep.
If, you know, if a dispatcher's EMD and a call providing medical service to them, by statute, she has to provide that and give them, hey, you know, do you know CPR? Do you want to give CPR? These are the steps you have to take. Well, the police might be talking on the radio, the firemen are talking on their radio. Years ago, we had the, we had the major accident on 95 that had one call, and multiple people were dead. So it's hard to say, you could have a bicycle, a person fall off a bicycle on Main Street, you're going to get 25 calls. We had the highway shut down for an entire day, and you really got one 911 call. So it's kind of hard to say, you just don't know. We'll have fires and we'll get one call and it's fire blowing out of a window, and you'll have someone with a barbecue fire and you'll get 25 phone calls. So it's kind of, it's that unknown, you know?
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Jason?
No, I don't have any questions.
I do, um, thank. Chris, with respect to the revenue number that's on your sheet there, the $33,562, could you give a little background on that?
Could you give me what the line item that is? I'm sorry.
Oh, sure, well, it's the revenue number on your.
There is no line item.
So can you just describe where your revenues come from?
Yeah, our revenue right now, yeah, our right revenue right now comes from building permits, I'm sorry, back to not building permits, blasting permits and lodging permits that come into our office.
I'm sorry, blasting and what else?
Lodging permits.
Lodging.
Yeah.
Hotels.
Yeah, hotels. We're doing a lot of orchards, we're doing a lot of buildings, so anytime they have to come in and get a permit for blasting, it's a $50 fee, those are given for a month. They've been blasting up there for two years, so every month, multiple blasters are coming in, renewing their permits.
And lodging, why?
Lodging, anything with the state of Connecticut, anything over, well, three units or more require a lodging permit, set, be set forth by us for the town statute.
And you're required to inspect them once a year?
Once a year, yeah. And they can't get, yeah, they can't get their lodging permit until they get 100 percent on their inspection, so if there's any fire extinguishers that are outdated, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, they don't get that until they give us 100 percent.
So, for example, can I just use gateways as an example?
Sure.
You don't get, you do inspections at Gateway.
We do.
And you don't get any revenue for those inspections from Gateway?
We do not.
And who gets all the, so the building department gets revenue, zoning gets revenue?
When they're building it.
Yeah, building permits.
No, yeah, I understand, but what I'm saying is, he's doing inspections, why is he not getting any revenue?
At this time of the town, we have not said, there's no fire marshal fee for any building permits right now.
And that would make sense, you don't want to give them three different towns, I mean, you don't want to give them three different bills for the same thing.
Yeah, sure, but maybe you.
You want to make sure that the one fee that they pay covers all the departments.
Well, then he should, then he should get a revenue number from that.
And that's reallocating to the same budget.
For us, you know, when a building's complete, the building official really is done with that building, it's closed, where I take over and that's something every year gets inspected. So from there, for, when it's done, the building official and the fire marshal inspect it during the building phase, but once that building's complete and there's no complaints, he goes aside and we take over that yearly inspection.
Right, but your point, Jason, is there's no revenue that goes to the fire department side of that, and they have to do inspections as well, it all goes to building, right?
Yep.
Good point.
We're trying to advocate for you, Chris.
No, I'm here, here with a smile.
Trying to increase that revenue number.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? I'm sorry, which building are you in?
What's that?
Which building are you in?
I'm in the old firehouse, the, it's the 171 Boston Mills Road.
Next to.
Right in front of the water building.
It is $4,000 a year for maintenance, seemed kind of, kind of like it had to be an old building.
Yeah, it's 1946.
Yeah.
So it's.
It's time to find, time to find someone a little less.
For us, on our show, I maintain five generators, we have one at each radio site, my office, we have a portable one, actually, we have three portable ones, that's part of that building maintenance.
Big chunky brick building, now $4,000 seems like, no, anyway, it seems like $4,000 seems like a lot of annual maintenance.
Well, a big portion of that is taken, if you look at, for generators too, because I have to have my yearly maintenance on my all our generators, so that comes out of that building maintenance one too, so I think it's.
Buy a new generator for you. All right, it's a lot of money. But I digress, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
Break.
Okay. We take a 10-minute?
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Have you guys heard of the fire study? What's that? The fire study? You heard of the web?